But I think the scale of the project is too big for the location. I think it will come to dominate the neighborhood and it's going to make it difficult for the residents in the area to park and actually just to live their life the way they've been doing for so long. I've lived in the Rondau area for 15 years now and I've seen it grow and I've seen a lot of building renovations. And I really would like to just reiterate what the other speakers have said. I think if the project was scaled back, I would definitely be in favor of it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Debra Bresnan.
Hello, Debra Bresnan. I live at 105 Abiel Street. I'm Irish. I'm very excited about the Irish Cultural Center as a concept. I agree with the things that other people have said in terms of the scale being outsized for the neighborhood. And I would really urge you to seek a positive declaration for the seeker so that the environmental impacts, the potential environmental impacts can be fully examined. And you give enough time to look at the project in its entirety and understand a little bit more about exactly how many events they plan to have and see something that is a little bit closer to a business plan. Thank you.
The next speaker is Brian Patterson.
Hi, Brian Patterson, 131 Klein Street. I saw the plans over here and it looks really nice, but I think you're trying to shoehorn it into a small space and maybe you should consider a place like the property across from the Armadillo. That'd be a really nice place for it. Plan your parking. Thanks.
The next speaker is Ruth Vangelis.
Hi, I'm Ruth Vangelis. I've been involved in Rondau since 1979 and I keep an apartment at 11 West Spring. I'd like to make several points. The first, I'd like to remind everybody that the city has spent tens of thousands of dollars, time and energy on forefront revitalization plans, development plans, and ground field studies. Many of these studies come back to the 1980s. All of these studies had growth and development goals. The largest investment probably since the 1900s was condo complex on Lower Broadway. The second largest investment in Rondau will be the Irish Cultural Center. And this project fits all of the city's plans and studies. Let's have it begin. The second point, in the mid-1980s, the city paid, I believe, $27,000 for a feasibility study to determine the future parking needs in Rondau. The maritime center was growing, the tour boat business started first with Marion T. Bug and later with Ripley and Winkle. The Urban Cultural Park Visitor Center first opened at the Maritime Museum and then moved to its own home on Lower Broadway, which the cultural visitor center further paved the way for increased tourism, growing pains started way back then for parking. And the city, I guess, ignored the feasibility study. Three urban renewal parcels were sold without us keeping a large portion for future parking needs. The ICC is the only project besides the condo to even attempt to provide some of its parking needs. Let's not stop this progress now that Rondau has made. Let the cultural center flourish. The time has come for the city to face up to its shortcomings and to solve the parking problem and not stop the planned growth and development. Remember, Rondau today was before cars. Ridiculous parking laws need to be brought up to today's community needs. Point three, before the Irish Cultural Center purchased the four parcels, the largest of which only opened onto Company Hill Path and West Strand, plus a lot across the street in January of 2013, they brought all the plans to the city. There was no opposition to this project. It was on the go until people moved into the house in their new homes in July 2015, knowing that the center was to be built within months. They hired a lawyer to disrupt decades of city planning. What a shame. To sum it up, wouldn't it be a more positive approach for all of us to work with the city to find parking solutions for the whole community and not jeopardize this very worthwhile project? Thank you.
The next speaker is Alan Vangelis.
I'm here to state that Tom Hoffey and Paul Tully and Kathy and my wife all speak for me. We wish this project very well. Thank you.
The next speaker is Allison Grant.
So I'm a new resident at 50 Abiel Street. I think the building's been up for about seven months or so. And nobody likes change. I don't like change. I'm coming from Saratoga Springs where the place is in growth every day. Personally, I love change, but it's going to affect my backyard too. So being new to Kingston, not New York, but Kingston, I've already been at the target of neighbors around who don't want me there, to the point where they have thrown beer bottles to the front door. So I understand that everyone gets upset with change, it's just part of human nature. My concern is that everyone's going to be for themselves and not caring what anyone else has to think. Noise ordinance that said 10:00 PM means 10:00 PM and not consider anything before that. And, you know, I'm only a favor for it. I also know that every culture has its own cultures and lots of things need to be put in place as far as alcohol goes and noise goes and age and licenses and all that. And, you know, personally, I believe that we can have paradise and we can put up parking lots. Thanks.
The next speaker is Steve Shabbitt. The next speaker is Jim Carey.
My name is Jim Carey. 389 Downriver, wasn't Dale Newkorn. Well-sold president of the E2000 reference. I just want to be able to shout out to my brother Bob, quick maker tonight, his wife is very sick. So, anyway, you want to say something? This reminds me of a quick story I want to tell you. We moved to Slakesburg. My father bought a house in Slakesburg. And I'll try to tie this thing in real quick for you. He bought a house in Slakesburg and the neighbor got a window that my father purchased this house. So he goes over to his wife and he says, "Honey, guess who the hell is moving next door?" "Who?" "It's an Irish family." She goes, "Why?" "What?" "Yeah, they got 10 kids." "Let's get the hell out of here." So he tried to sell his house, he couldn't sell his house. His name was Mr. Crane. As the years went on, we became very, very good friends with Mr. Crane. Mr. Crane and his wife, they were great people. He actually hired us. He was in the piano rebuilding business, right? Next door. And we, of course, we were strong as oxes and he'd call us up and we'd go over there and help him out. Well, when I went off into the service and I came back, he said to me, he said, "Jim, you know what? I was afraid of you guys when you first moved in, but I'm glad the hell you moved in." So what I'm hearing tonight is a little bit of fear that, you know, we're going to overwhelm these people, we're going to overwhelm the whole neighborhood and the change is going to happen. You'd be surprised how much it's not going to change. And I also want to say Hoffey said it right and Bill Carrick definitely, and Ruth Vangelis is absolutely correct. I think it's the fear that we don't understand. Everybody's a little bit, like the girl that was just up here, she was saying, "Change, he'll change his heart sometimes." And we're going to give it hell. Thank you very much.
My name is Hillary Harvey. I live at 26 Abiel Street. I'm wondering if the board members have received the letter from Warren Zelensky? Have they received the letter from Ted and the Green Plan? Have you received it too?
We got them in the mail yesterday, yes.
Oh, wait, did you just say?
They were circulated.
Okay. So while I agree that the concept is good, I would like to see the Irish Cultural Center and Hudson Valley come into compliance with the process. You know, the changes announced tonight are promising steps. It's still, they're still pretty fluid and undefined and they don't, still don't include the public at all. We've been asked to be included, obviously, and we're not being. This will have adverse impacts on the Rondau neighborhood and I understand that your task as the board is to determine whether it will have at least one potential environmental impact. So I wanted to point out a couple of things. According to the LWRP policy 23/3, compatibility between proposed action and the resource means that the general appearance of the resource will be reflected in a variety of things, including scale, proportion, mass, setback, landscaping and lighting. So the ICC HB's scale, proportion and mass, as even the Heritage Area Commission has recommended to you, is out of character with the surrounding properties on Abiel Street, West Strand and Broadway and would generate adverse impacts to the neighborhood by compromising views, vista, historic integrity, charm and cultural character because of this. You've also heard that it will have impacts on noise, parking and traffic because of this. In terms of the landscaping, the ICC HB, as I understand it, will be seeking a variance on the landscaping requirement for the proposed parking lot in order to fit the 18 spots. Policy 25B, number five of the LWRP states screening more parking area for three or more vehicles of residential property. It shall be screened from view by landscaping, opaque fence or wall or other means. In terms of lighting, the ICC HB proposes to add three streetlights to the Abiel Street neighborhood, totaling maximum lighting levels of 14-foot candles, about three times the 1-5 foot candles recommended by the planning boards, policy number four. As pointed out, I took the Green Plan in his letter, which I hope you'll have a chance to read. Policy 25B, number five of the LWRP states, "All outdoor lighting is to be of such nature and so arranged as to preclude the deterioration of glare onto jointed properties and streets." So both the landscaping and lighting proposed for the ICC HB will have adverse impacts. I have something else that I'm pointing out in my letter, I hope you get a chance to read it. I wanted to talk about the people who couldn't be here tonight. We have a petition with over 130 signatures. Since I printed this out, we've received more. We're all calling for a positive declaration on this seeker. It will have impacts and they need to be studied adequately. And I think that people need to be included in any changes that are made to this proposal. We're asking to be included in this conversation we had a very nice meeting with the ICC HB the other day, thanks to Steve Shabbitt or Alderman. And I think that these conversations could be very helpful. And just to, I'm not even going to talk about Ruth Vangelis's accusation. I don't think that it, we were told to hire a lawyer by people on the boards of the city of Kingston because we were not going to be listened to, otherwise concerns would not be heard. And that's why we are at this place. We didn't want to be in this place anymore than the ICC HB did. But there was no alternative and I'm hoping that now we will start to find some sort of compromise. It's desperately needed. And I really hope that you will make a positive declaration on this seeker because it will have impact on this neighborhood and they need to be determined to extent. Thank you.
The next speaker is Amy White.
Hi, I'm Amy White and I live at 71 Abiel Street and I own a business, a hair salon at 105 Abiel Street. Everybody ahead of me who has concerns about the building is more eloquent than I would be. I just hope that this is further researched and concerned about environmental impact. Of course, you know, being my home and my business, I'm concerned about the parking. And somebody said earlier, you know, the shuttle buses will be rabid. I agree, it's human nature that people will want to park on the street, et cetera. So I'm worried about the impact. You know, I'm just, I'm just concerned about the scale of the project and et cetera, et cetera, everything everybody else has said. So, I mean, I just hope it's just further investigated and I hope it's transparent to us in the, in the neighborhood who are concerned, you know, that all these things will be considered. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Lawrence McCollough.
Good evening, everyone. I'm, I'm quite in favor of the, of the Irish Cultural Center. I live at 132 Andrew Street, but I'm also in favor of, of being very careful about how we develop in the Rondau area. I would encourage a positive declaration of the seeker. And I think we really need to consider the size of this organ, of this, of this building and the effect it will have on the people surrounding it. Thank you.
The next speaker is James P. Casey.
I'm James Casey. Lived in Kingston. My parents are buried here. I worked for Social Security Administration for 15 years and I tried to do the best job I could for, for you folks. I'm Irish. My parents were born there, my father, great-grandfather. I'm a cultural part of the Irish Cultural Center. Besides, I work for the feds. I'm also a poet. I sing, I play the Irish drum, I write and been living here since 75 in Ulster County, which by the way is named after one of the provinces in Ireland and which has, you know, conflicts there. And I hope that, you know, we can resolve whatever the issues are. You know, I did write stuff up, but guess what I left at home, which, you know, when you get to be my age, that kind of stuff happens a lot. The view, number one, before the Irish Cultural Center bought the property, there was no view. There was a bunch of sumac trees, poison ivy, Company Hill Path was overgrown and the Irish Cultural Center cleaned it up, put up a little park in there. Now there's a view. Oh, look at, there's a view. Right. And the building, even though the architect is a world-renowned architect, which will point out Kingston, yeah, we're on the map, but this guy built the first wee skyscraper. He's not going to build a skyscraper on Abiel Street. He didn't design it. It's not as big as people are afraid it is. If you look at it, the actual size of it on the property, it's perfect for what it is. And if it does get a little smaller, because people have said that, okay, well, we'll get a little smaller. But change, yeah, everybody's scared of change, you know? That's true. We all are. And as they say astrology, I'm in a fixed sign, I'm Scorpio, fixed sign, you know? And, ah, change, you know, we all worry about change, but I've been trying to overcome my resistance to change all my life and find out every time I do, you know, if things work out. And I'm glad to see that everybody is working very hard and this is such a democratic thing. I mean, you know, there's people coming up there, everybody's trying to do their best, bend over backwards, especially not to say there's any problems with the Irish. I mean, you know, nobody has any problems with us, but there is another thing, parking. You know, I said one time, "Do you think the settlers didn't go out west because we didn't have roads and highways?" Well, they went out there anyway. And parking, maybe this, it will be something that will get the city after all these decades to actually make it so that the residents and the businesses and everyone will have proper parking and maybe this will make, you know, be a wake-up call, hopefully. And don't be afraid, you know? This is going to be a fabulous thing. It's going to be incredible. Really, really, really incredible. You're going to be so proud and the property values are going to go up because this place will be a very special place. It'll be green, sustainable. It'll, you know, put a fourth page in the history, so it's going to have its own utilities.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. Art and culture, very important. Irish culture, Celtic culture goes back 3,000 years, you know? Poetry, dance, music, singing, literature, you name it. And that's what is bringing the money into the Hudson Valley and to Kingston is art, the arts. Let's not be afraid of art and culture. And if you say, "Why didn't they even build that Irish Cultural Center?" "Oh, it wasn't enough parking." What? You mean they didn't make accommodations or whatever? Was parking? Yeah, and then they were afraid they were going to smell cabbage. I'm only kidding. Remember Fridays when you could come to Friday because you could smell the dish and you knew that was overcooked? You smelled the cabbage in the dish, you know, on Fridays. Back then when it was a sin to eat meat, but things changed. And in any event, I'm supporting it, as you can tell, and thank you to everybody on both sides and thank you to board. You all are amazing people, an amazing place we live, incredible place. And it's going to be even better and the world's going to get better and we're going to get better. And we just, don't be afraid. All right, God bless.
Just before, we're getting close to the end of the list of individuals who have signed up to speak. So if there is anyone in the audience that still wishes to see, to speak, just please seek high up and get your name on the list. Our next speaker is Mark Reicher.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mark Reicher. I live at 11 Hemlock Avenue in an Irish neighborhood. I have many Irish friends. And I'm not against this, but what I want to get to know, I, I worked with the building department since 76 and I retired in 14. And I was through every one of these buildings because I worked with community development and community development, I wrote the violations for the buildings and wrote the work right up, how to fix the buildings. And we were, that section, Abiel Street from Broadway to Ravine Street was a targeted area. And I remember at one time I issued a permit to tear a building down, it was a bar room down by Merrill's Place. And we got in trouble because we were changing the streetscape. And the state came down on us, the federal government, they said we were going to withhold your grant money. And I got a little bit of a hard order. Okay. So the target area was that little district there. And then we had another district that went from West Strand up to Spring Street. And I guess you're arguing, your attorneys are arguing about that. Okay. So they were actually areas that were set aside from the other downtown areas that we had a target to maintain that streetscape and those old buildings. And for the 35 years that I was in the building department, I walked through those buildings with architects and engineers and homeowners that wanted to buy them. And we developed that neighborhood as the old neighborhood. The west side of Broadway was the old side. The east side was the new building, it would fall in those new projects, when the garage had built the new city hall or whatever. And you have to keep that in mind, old and new, it's just common sense. I don't know what this building looks like, I know the architect's will or whatever and I can say, but anything that, you tell me a building in that neighborhood that has parking around, I don't know. The old buildings never had parking. I remember we put parking into the zoning ordinance and, and the reason why we put parking in the zoning ordinance, so the planning board could turn down projects. And that was maybe not the way the city could run, but that's the way it was put in. So I would say the city, mayor should entertain, this Irish center should be down there. The Irish go down there and when they have these affairs, they're all, okay. Maybe the server renewal area, as one lady said, at the end of Abiel Street, you could trade, if you've got 16,000 square feet of air.
Thirty seconds.
Let, let, let them trade square footage. Let them put a new building on a new part of Broadway. Well, I'm not going to tell you the corporation council or the mayor should take eminent domain for this project or this parcel, but maybe, maybe that, that parcel should be used for the general public. And, and you wouldn't have all this discussion about what's going on there. The city wouldn't be regulated like the, some of these regulations. And it would be better for, for everybody. Give the Irish preferential treatment for that land down below or whatever, find a good parcel and give them the green light to build a building. And in that area, not, not someplace out off, off of Broadway. Downtown, Herbert Renewal, Cross Mill for the city hall, you know? They should go to the state and the federal government and tell them, "We're preserving this west side and we need money for parking." And let the Irish build onto the property line or six feet off like we used to have in the zoning, build a building whatever size they want and give them the parking, you know, for the general public, but give them the parking. And then that's a compromise. And I'm not telling the mayor what to do or what the corporation should do or what you guys should do, but you should, you should work it out better because I see a lot of people here that are dissatisfied. And there's a lot of people that want it. And you've got to break the ice and get the city involved and do something right. And I guess that's what a, a building inspector for 35 years used common sense. And I guess maybe that's how you were on, you know, telling them.
The next speaker is Barbara Scott.
Hi, I'm Barbara Scott. I'm at 17 President's Place in the Rondau and I just wanted to add my voice to the many that you've heard tonight. I have some concerns. I love the Irish, I am Irish. I, I like the idea of a center. I'd love to see it built, but I do fear the scale of it and the variation on the functions that keep sort of coming and going as to how much it's going to be taken in, is it going to be a banquet hall or not? You know, the number of functions that are hoping to happen there seem like a grand scale beyond what we have space for. So anyways, I urge you to declare a positive decision on the seeker. Thank you.
The next speaker is Australian Bonita.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Bonita. I live at 93 Andrews Freerear in Kingston. First of all, we need a positive declaration by seeker for this. The original scope of the project would have enhanced the neighborhood. Readjusted project is too large and out of scope for the neighborhood. And I understand that bigotry and change are being raised to deflect the problems of this center. Does the cultural center have the enough money to complete the project? If not, do they have all the monies needed for the insurance and blasting to start the project? And before the project is granted, that needs to be found, found out. The wording and splitting of hairs to determine that zoning was wrong. If this is allowed to happen in this neighborhood, it can happen to any one of us. Would you like this project shoehorned into your neighborhood right next to your house? Thank you.
The next speaker is Gina Wong. The next speaker is Deanna Baum.
Good evening. My name is Deanna Baum and I'm the owner of 42 Abiel Street, next door to the ICC parcel. I chose to purchase a house in the Rondau because of district's historic character and its small shops and restaurants. And I chose the house on Abiel Street for its views of the West Strand and location on the historic Company Hill Path. But I'm here now tonight because of the impacts of the Irish Cultural Center as proposed would have on the small shops and restaurants, quality of life, the Company Hill Path, environment and character of the neighborhood.
Ms. Baum, can I just ask you maybe a quick microphone? Thank you. Claire?
When I first learned of the Irish Cultural Center purchasing the property, I was in support of the idea. A center for culture and classes at Abiel is a good fit for the Rondau. And I thought it was admirable that an organization was planning to raise money needed and build the center all by themselves. But the plans have changed and now the proposed center is more commercial than educational in nature. And the center plans to rely on taxpayers to pay for the construction rather than fundraising efforts. When I purchased my, uh, my house, which also borders Company Hill Path, there was a 700 square foot gallery space in the brick addition in front of the house. In my pre-purchase meeting with the building department, which actually was with Mark Riker, um, he encouraged me to abandon the commercial use and convert the building back to all residential. The allowable uses for our segment of Abiel Street allow for residences, schools, churches and home occupation uses. Since I would not be an owner-occupant, the commercial use would no longer qualify as a home occupation use. So I moved forward with the conversion to a compliant residential building. Now the proposal for the property next door is a 17,000 square foot center with multiple commercial uses, not only on the first floor, but on the second and third floors as well, which would make the building an anomaly in this residential mixed and mixed-use area. Noise and traffic generated from such an active center would have a profound impact on the residences on the street. It's crucial that laws imposed be uniformly enforced. Exceptions can create incompatibility within neighborhoods and puts neighbors at odds because of it. New construction is also required to be in scale with surrounding buildings. By virtue of the ICC's proposed size, they are seeking to create a building that can accommodate almost 400 people, but can only accommodate parking for 18 cars. This is in a day and age where people now primarily drive. That would necessitate a nearly, a near monopoly on the existing municipal parking spaces relied upon by the small Rondau shops and businesses that occupy the historic buildings that were built before parking weeks. I'm also especially concerned of the impact of the proposal to blast away at the bluff of Company Hill Path and to build a proposed center right on the path rather than observing the historic setbacks away from it. The Company Hill Path homes, including those that formerly stood under the ICC parcel, were all set back in a straight line away from the path and flagged to Abiel Street, which is their primary entrance. Ignoring and pushing forward a historic setback from Company Hill Path and building on a scale that's not appropriate in the existing neighborhood would be detrimental to the existing historic character of the Company Hill Path. When reviewing new development projects in the historic district, the historic maps of the city should be consulted so new construction continues in continuity with the existing built environment. Old maps of the city are a valuable resource and the board should refer to them as a roadmap to help determine proper building placement and scale to preserve the historic nature of the neighborhood. If these maps had been consulted and created in current ICC proposal, most of the impacts that we have here and are concerned about tonight would never have been created and would not exist. New construction affords the opportunity to build a scale that's appropriate for a parcel without impact to the neighborhood and should aim to be a good neighbor and complement and enhance the existing district and be an asset to the community rather than creating impacts for its endure. For the reasons I've mentioned, for those outlined by Warren Replansky and Ted Zepin who are representing me, I respectfully request that the board make a positive declaration for seeker action, that the, uh, impacts can be studied and fully mitigated to ensure compatibility with the Rondau. I brought with me, um, brought with me for the board's review the 1899 sandworm map and old photos of the homes along Company Hill Path, including those that formerly stood on the ICC site for your review. I also have a letter from Linda Novak, the former, former owner of my house and the owner of, and the former Company Hill Gallery, which she asked for me to present to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lynn Harry.
Hi, I'm Lynn Harry, I live at 50 Abiel Street. And I've been in Kingston for about seven months as well. I love the building that I live in because it fits in the fabric of the neighborhood. It was a temple, a restaurant, a church, and now it's apartments. And, um, and it fits in with the Rondau. My concern with this building, I'm just echoing some of the things other people have said, but being an art director and an artist and somebody who loves culture, I have no problems with this center. It's, the way this center is designed, the size of it, doesn't really enhance the neighborhood. It's too big, it doesn't look like it fits into the neighborhood. It's going to completely change the fabric of our neighborhood. As it is now, when there's events, people park in our private parking spots. There's noise, there's litter, there's broken glass all over the neighborhood. Uh, 400 people, 300, 400 people coming to a residential neighborhood seems extremely large. I really encourage you guys to think about the neighborhood, the history of the neighborhood. And being an artist on all for a cultural center that fits in the neighborhood, that doesn't disturb the neighborhood. Um, the way that it looks now, there's a big picture on the sign. And it looks like the whole front of Abiel Street where this building is, is a parking lot with a big wall. That's not, that's not aesthetically pleasing to our neighborhood. It's not inviting and it's not residential. So, and, and then two restaurants in there, that's huge. Is this a convention center or is it a cultural center? I really ask you to scale this down and make it appropriate. I love art, I love culture, I have Irish heritage too. It doesn't have to be so big, does it? Why does it need to be so big? It's so easy for people to say, forget about the parking, just put it there, deal with it later. No, we live here, we're going to have to deal with this every day. And how later are these events going to go? Are they going to keep us up at night or is there going to be a cutoff time at 10:00 PM? Um, we, we live here, we need to know that we're followed as well too. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ken Frackle.
Hi, good evening, planning board. I live on Russell and Spring Street. Thank you. And, um, I'm a Gemini, so I'm going to kind of talk back and forth while I'm playing for it. Uh, I love being, living in this area, it's so beautiful. I have friends come to visit from other countries and places and I've had people cry when they see the beauty and compare it to the Rondau. I walk from my place up past, you know, the beautiful park. And I can tell you, if you have a sense of humor, parking is amusing. If you don't, it's frequently atrocious. I love Irish folk. I spent a lot of time with Dimric and Meline and Joy in Scotland. They've become my friends and I probably regret they gave me their addresses. People wonder why I hang out with Dimric because they say, you don't even drink. Well, some of you might recognize me, I did puppetry for years about disabilities. I'm not a drug dealer, I'm a drug counselor. So if you think you know me that way, it's not that. Um, I work for Hudson Road Housing, if there's a brick left, we restore. I worked 20 years with the homeless. I'm familiar with the streets of the Kipsey lot as well. I would really encourage us, we need culture. The whole planet's going to crap anyways. I'm not looking to offend any one of the presidential electionists and off the fast track. But I would say, huh, see, can't make joke about the president. Anyway, I would say that as much as I want that center, many of the people that I've met, it is, I would always say, thanks, the size. The back of it is beautiful, I love the idea of sitting there seeing the water. The front, if I lived in those houses, I'd trade for lightning. Um, I think it needs to be smaller. But, you know, we take a brick at Hudson Road Housing and restore it and get grants. But we look toward the future and heading on and what will happen next. That site does not really supply that. So I would encourage more women involved with this project. I love the beautiful architecture, but more women, look at it, look at it. Full of beautiful curbs and towns and women with the curved mirror and bodies. Not so square. Smaller, you want big, do big somewhere else. Do a beautiful, beautiful building there. Look to the left at that beautiful hall, do that too. We'll fundraise more, leave a comment. We do good puppets. But please consider the neighbors, please. And let's try, if it's getting down, fine. If not, could we please look at another site and this one? Thank you.
The next speaker is Paul Geary.
Good evening. My name's Paul Geary, I'm a resident of 236 Clifton Avenue here in Kingston, a lifelong city resident. Speaking in favor of the Cultural Center. Um, as I've listened to all of the speakers tonight, I don't think I heard one say, um, that they were opposed to the, um, the, the idea of a cultural center. I'm just saying that, um, they want everything to be scaled back. The, I believe it's already in record, the events that, uh, we would plan to operate out of there, meaning film, photography, um, dance, theater. Um, all of these ventures require space. And I would say that, um, in order to be able to accomplish our mission, uh, we need the, the building, the scale would be right for, for that, um, for that space. And, um, I just want to reiterate that, uh, we are good neighbors. We, we run the hooly, um, the next day, everything is spotless by 10 o'clock in the morning. Um, and I would say that there would be no reason to believe that we would not be a good neighbor on the site. Thank you very much. Okay, that was our last speaker. Um, I want to thank the speakers and those in attendance for participating in this process. Uh, I also wanted to thank everybody for showing respect to all of those who did come up to the microphone to speak. Uh, as I mentioned at the beginning of the program, that when the planning office has a new proposal that was, uh, presented by the ICC folks, it will be made available to the public. Uh, it will also be made available on the city's website. Um, also the period for public comment will remain open for five additional business days. And this will allow time for additional public comment to be submitted to this board that can be submitted through the planning office. Uh, so at this time, uh, we'll make a motion that we, uh, close the public period at the conclusion of that fifth business day. Do I have a second? Second by Robert Jacobson, all in favor? Opposed? That is counted. Again, thank you, folks, thank you very much.